Good evening and welcome to this, the Halloween edition of the Livermore City Council. It's the October 23 meeting, and I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members of the city council are present and accounted for. I ask that you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we just came out of closed session and there was nothing to announce from the closed session, so we'll now move to proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation from the beautification committee, their annual update, and I think we have some awards tonight. Mr. Getz.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
I'm very well, so.
Great, thanks.
Thanks for having us.
Step up to the podium.
Yeah, I'm proud to be representing the city's beautification committee. We have a couple of our committee members with us tonight, but most importantly, we're here to recognize some special homeowners. Several years ago, we started a beautification awards program, and every year, the committee recognizes residents who've done just an extraordinary job of transforming their house, either the landscaping, or the paint, or a combination of the two things. And I'd like to give a shout out to the city staff for supporting our efforts this year. It started out several years ago where we had to basically ask people on the street, "Hey, would you nominate yourself, or could we nominate your house?" And this year, we had a record number of applicants, so we're really tickled about that. So what I'd like to do is just show the audience and the council the five winners for this year, and then we'll call the individuals up one at a time, and Mayor can present them with their awards. So the first house is owned by Chester and Leane Moore, and there's a before and after picture for each property, thank you. As you can see, they replaced their lawn mostly with drought tolerant landscape, and although we were blessed to have a significant amount of rain in many respects last year, it could hold off a little bit, I suppose, but we still think that the drought tolerant landscape is a good choice for people in the future, the way the weather's so unpredictable these days. They also did something which was kind of unique. They redirected the downspouts from their drains to existing tree and plant roots, which is a good thing. Rose and Keith Wilkinson, they also added drought tolerant plants to their landscaping, and then they added some additional colors, you can see, to the front of the house. Really nice. Joe Wolter, he expanded the use of native grasses, as you can see in the lower right, and he also added some trees into the median. So technically, I guess those become street trees, which are city property, but that's a good thing, too. Lori and Ira Whiney, they created a low water garden, and they added some elements of the wine country into their front yard. You can see the wine barrels there. It's a pretty dramatic change from the before picture to the after. And then Leah Maxwell Stiles did almost a complete front yard conversion. You can see they added a pergola and a sitting area on the front porch. They redid the landscaping and the grass. It truly, it just stands out in the neighborhood. And we'd like to commend these homeowners for really taking care of not only their own, the appearance of their own homes, but it helps beautify the neighborhood and overall that it's a good thing for the community as a whole, so we're really tickled. So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to come down, we'll call the winners up one at a time. And I'm not sure that everybody's here, and if I mispronounce anybody's name, please forgive me. So we'll start with the Moores, Chester and Leane Moore. They make a tie? Yep. Terrific. Congratulations. Rose and Keith Wilkinson?
Congratulations.
Joe Walter?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Lori and Ira Whiney? Whiney's take it? Okay. And last, but certainly not least, Leah Maxwell Stiles?
Sure.
Display it proudly, because you've earned it. Your houses are really great. Did terrific work.
Okay, let's, uh, take that. Okay. Okay, well, we'll go to the new way then to do these things. Sorry. No, no, you need to get in. We're missing somebody. Wait a minute. No, no offense.
He did all the work. I need to take the credit.
One more here. Okay, thank you.
not only their neighborhoods, but the cities, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the citizens forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. I ask to keep the comments to three minutes or less. The city council cannot discuss nor deliberate during the citizens forum, so with that, I have Vera Almo, Robert Lopez. I believe you're speaking on the citizens forum?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Citizens forum. Vera Almo, Robert Lopez, and David McWigan.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I hope you had a great day. I did. I survived another day in Livermore on my, close to my seventh year being a homeless woman. Before that, I started out here in 1982, raising my single, I was a single mom raising my daughter, a 14-month-old. I took an apartment here at Royal Garden Apartments, number nine. Wish I would've thought of the clothing line at that time. Anyhow, I've raised two children here. One graduated from Livermore High in 1999. I've watched my son graduate from Grenada High in 2013. Both are very successful adults. My daughter's a nurse in Stockton, raising my two grandkids, one that was born with reversal of arteries, the heart, and he's doing great. I was recently approached by an officer at 7:30 in the morning, sleeping in front of the library, and I was very offended by the officers that came to my door, knocked on it, assumed I was someone else, and gave me a ticket citation for sleeping in my vehicle. I told the man, "I've got glaucoma. I got covered in fiberglass in 1987, working at Lawrence Livermore National Lab. I also had an incubator hood cover pulled down on my head in 1989, working at the lab." So I decided, "This is not a good job for me. I'm going to die out here if I don't get out of here quick." I went to one of the physicians there, which he looked at my body and he warned me that I was a high candidate for mesothelioma. He counted over 110 moles on my body at the time, and he removed five from the medical building. At that point, I decided, "Okay, if I'm around radiation, and I'm exposed to chemicals working in biomedical, and I'm getting an incubator hood cover pulled down on my head by a UC student that fell out of procedure, I think it's time for me to move on." So I decided to start my own housecleaning business, and basically what I did was, I did it for 20 years, and I worked for great historians in Livermore, such as Graham Nissen, his property up on First Street. I had worked for the Greers. I worked for El Tean Stone for 20 years. I worked for Pat Crowley and was chased into his house property by a rattlesnake. I saved two dogs that day. I've watched many children in this town pass away before their parents, very close people to me. I established the Livermore Girls Travel Smoke Travel Team along with the Shibes. I have lost loved ones here. I've watched friends die, watched neighbors die. I've called 911 and saved lives here in this town, and it appalls me to know that I am living in fear now in the town I've been in for 35 years. And I plead with you to take away this ordinance, because now I have to pay a citation, and I'm more worried about fixing my car, after it just got hit on the freeway on a hit-and-run. So not only did I spend my week getting a hit-and-run on Hacienda, I spent my week getting a citation, and then I found out my son had a growthage in his throat and has to have surgery on his throat on November 9th. I'm very tired. I've been run around by the abode services, to the point where I have lost money out of my pocket of equivalently to $500 so far. I've been promised a mountain and given a molehill. And I'm not a mole, and I'm not a criminal. I'm a hard-working Livermore resident that I feel I need respect from, and I plead with you, because the churches that have kept me alive while I had 11 and 1/4 millimeter stone stuck in my uretha three years ago and was rushed to emergency surgery, Mrs. Kim Randolph saved my life by getting me into Fremont Hospital and putting me up in a hotel room for four days. Then she put me in circles for change, and I learned about how to go back to work as a disabled woman and have the courage to let go of my depression and my anxiety and my, my social feeling of distrust in humanity, after going to a paralegal school in Alameda County for a paralegal license and find out while I'm going out for glaucoma surgery and come back to school and find out from the FBI that my school is being shut down for fraud. I have been through hell on earth in the Bay Area. I have been beaten down in the Bay Area. Everything I have worked for and obtained in my lifetime since I was 15-years-old and the second to the youngest of a 10-child home, I have lost. But you know what the one thing I haven't lost? Is my dignity, my self-respect, my perseverance, my love for humanity, my community that has been blessing me with clothes on my back, food in my belly, but no success with shelter. I am pleading with you, as if you were God, to please stop the evil that is coming out of the city of Livermore. I do not want to see other people being cited for trying to survive on the streets, to be able to endure not knowing where to pee, or where to get sleep adequate, because I am insomniac big time and sleep deprived. Not only am I poor and broken down and depressed and sick with glaucoma and skin cancer times 18 biopsies from working in a nuclear lab, I am depressed and disappointed and disgusted in the humanity and the greediness that I'm seeing in my environment. We need a shelter for our homeless people. We need to worship one scripture. Mr. John Murchard, please listen one more second. Read John, chapter 2, verse 2. "If I was a woman, man, who walked in here with a suit on, would you seat me to the front? Or if I was a man who walked in here with shabby clothes on, would you seat me to the rear?" Because I am above that.
Thank you. Robert Lopez, Dave McWigan, John Stein.
Good afternoon, evening. How are you? I'm a vet. I'm a 24-year vet, and I have no place to live, because you guys take my license away for back child support. How am I supposed to pay guys back? I can't get a job. I went to tractor school. I just wait at the top of the class, and I can't even get a job, because you guys took my license back child support.
David McWigan, John Stein, Greg Scott.
On June 26th, we learned Livermore acted deliberately to interfere in the trial of a sexual, of ex-officer Dan Black. It was overly kind to call Mayor Marchand's responses to date merely inconsistent. Mayor Marchand told us that this was just a common courtesy. That is certainly not the case when the officer is on trial. He told us there was no allegations of child abuse, knowing he had a child abuse report suppressed. He spent a lot of time misrepresenting Livermore's involvement and still refuses to explain why. We know there was no council vote, so Mayor Marchand acted independently. When I pointed it out, that it was Mayor Marchand who directed the attorney to suppress evidence, he falsely accused me of accusing him of obstruction of justice, again deflecting from answering why he would take such deplorable actions. Why did you, John Marchand, deliberately interfere in the trial of a sexual predator? Why did you misrepresent your involvement as a common courtesy? And why did you deny the existence of a child abuse report when you knew it existed? We have a right to know why you are not being truthful with the people of Livermore.
Question for the city attorney. Was there any allegation of child abuse in the case of the police officer who was recently terminated?
Not with regard to Mr. Black.
Thank you. Oops, you broke it.
I broke it. I fixed it.
Well done, thank you.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. Over the last 35 years, Livermore's downtown has been transformed from a sleepy, commercial district to a culturally and economically successful, vibrant community and visitor There have been three specific plans for the downtown. The establishment of Main Street, now downtown Livermore, a farmer's market, the relocation of Route 84, as well as the development of the Golden Triangle. A critical mass of restaurants, coffee shops, wine bars, and other establishments have been brought into place. A community theater and a second movie theater have been built, as well as a large parking structure. An attractive, heavily landscaped First Street is now in place, and it creates a friendly pedestrian environment for the community. There have also been some other events that have occurred that have helped in the establishment of our vibrant downtown. The relocation of Lucky Market created an abundance of parking. The relocation of 84 and a subsequent construction caused a number of the commercial establishments to relocate, freeing up a lot of vacant space and buildings for other uses. The separation of the downtown from residential development has allowed for commercial development with relaxed noise standards, as well as some odor and glare impacts. There are some specific things that could be done to retain and improve our downtown, things that make our downtown successful. We can work to retain the cultural and small-town character of our downtown using native materials, wood, brick, stone, to keep the character of the community, as well as the architecture, We can provide strong separation for the residential and commercial development. We can continue to provide an abundance of convenient parking, as well as providing green space and heavily landscaped other streets than the downtown. I urge you to carefully consider the future development of downtown. It is fragile and easily destroyed, and retaining the businesses and the character of the downtown is important to the community, to the local area, and to the local businesses that it attracts. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're getting a tremendous amount of input for that at yourlivermore.org, and we're accepting comments until November 3rd, so yourlivermore.org. Thank you. Greg Scott and Lisa Traumovich. Richard Scott.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marchand and Livermore City Council. I'm Greg Scott. I spoke to you the last two meetings on the homeless issue. I've had some input since, from speaking to you before, and I want to be very clear that I do not speak for all the homeless, nor do I even think I speak for the majority of homeless, but apparently, I do speak for some. As we've seen tonight, it's a very emotional issue. The overriding message that I've gotten out there is, one, for gratitude, that what is being done for the homeless, and in that vein, I offer an apology to you, Mayor Marchand, and to the Livermore City Council, and to city staff, and to private citizens, and to corporations that are doing something. It is not my intent to not be grateful for what is being done. This is not to say that enough is being done. It is not. However, that is not my main point. My main point is, we are going about this issue wrong, but we need to get on a positive track. I had the honor of meeting your associate, Community and Economic Development Director tonight, and he has my business card, and I'm sure he's going to contact me. And the, why we're going about the homeless issue wrong is we're not getting to causality. There is a myriad of reasons of why homelessness happens, but there's one common issue to all of it, that people don't have a place on the planet, and that is key. They need to have a place on the planet, and that would be a commons. Either with those people that have cars, and those people that don't, they need a place in a sense of place. You, I think your budget for the Human Services Department is around 1.6 million a year. You could multiply that by seven or eight times, 10 times. You could make it a tenth of your, I think your annual budget for the city of Livermore is around 115 million. That's not going to work. You could have infinite resources. It's not going to work unless you get a causality. It's just throwing money at it, you know? There needs to be a commons, there needs to be a place in a sense of place, and that's not the only thing. There needs to be a pathway to productivity somewhere, and so people have a sense of self-worth. And unless we get to causality, we aren't going to solve this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having these open forums. I'm Lisa Traumovich. I live on Pistana, and I represent Livermore Shakespeare Festival. I just wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to the city of Livermore. We are on the consent calendar today with the, with a potential grant, but I also wanted to highlight the help that we've received over the years here at Livermore to get to this place, and I felt like whenever the city has something to share, they've been willing to share it. So we've been able to office and hold rehearsals at the train depot and at the old Chestnut Street space for several years at very low cost, which has helped us be able to stay in the black since inception as a nonprofit, which is very hard to do, I'm sure you appreciate. But the city is a part of that success, and now those spaces are going on to other uses for the benefit of the city, and that's wonderful. So they've been able to stay in play, and I understand there's going to be some low-cost housing on the Chestnut Street site, which will be wonderful. And, oh, I wanted to just report out that we've now ended our fiscal year and have been able to say that we're ending in the black. We grew by 25% with our outdoor festival at Wendy Vineyards, and 39% of our customers this year came from outside the Tri-Valley. So we are bringing a large number of people into the community to enjoy our community and hopefully leave a little bit of money in our community to help us with our community needs as well. But I want to thank you for the partnership and thank you for the recommendations.
Great programs this summer, by the way. Wonderfully done. Okay, that's it for the citizens forum. Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there anything that anyone would like to have pulled for discussion of the consent calendar? Okay, I have two cards. What I'd like to do is, I have two cards for 4.01. What I'd like to do is to have a motion for consent calendar 4.02 to 4.06.
I'll move 4.02 through 4.06.
Second? Second by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously. Okay, two cards on 4.01. I have Randy Knott and Anthony Rangel. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. My name is Randy Knott. I'm the Director of Government and Public Affairs for a company called Genesin. We are a clean and safe cannabis company, and we've been operating as Genesin for about eight months in the state of California. Aware of the item tonight, I think, just to give you a little background on where I come from, I spent the last five years working for the city manager of the city of Sacramento as the Government Affairs Director, and the last year and a half, I spent regulating cannabis for the city of Sacramento. Sacramento has had 30 medical marijuana dispensaries since 2009, and worked very closely with the team that regulated it. After a year and a half, I got a lot of different job offers, but I had one company who actually wanted my 25 years in local government, my understanding of land use, and what I fought for with the League of Cities, which was to maintain local control, which is exactly what your council is doing this evening. I know some of my colleagues have met with the city planner and the assistant planner to discuss the potential for a medical cannabis dispensary in your town. We forwarded a, just a brief, a brief 64-page proposal. It's a PowerPoint, so there's like three words on each page, but we would greatly appreciate your consideration. I'm not coming in here like a lot of other cannabis companies, saying, "January 1st is coming and the world comes to an end on January 1st." That is not true. Obviously, as a city, it behooves you, under Mercurus and Prop 64, to have either a prohibition or a regulation in place before January 1st, so the state doesn't do it for you, because the state doesn't know what's best for Livermore, or Sacramento, or Bakersfield. Only those communities know what is best for them. But as you deliberate and consider serving patients in this city, we are a fully organic, full-service company. We have a lot of communities that are happy to do cultivation. We have about 3 million square feet of cultivation in the state, manufacturing, delivery, distribution. What we don't have is enough people serving patients, and I know the city did a lot of due diligence looking into it. Should it be something that the council would reconsider or put forward, we would be pleased to come in and do a presentation of what we offer to the community. I'm sure there are other cannabis companies that would be interested in coming in as well. So I just wanted to introduce myself, let you know that your supplemental item is attached to me. I would be your community liaison, and I thank you for the time and the interest, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Ms. Knott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Anthony Rangel. I am the founder and president of Nature's Remedy Collective, East Bay Healing Alliance, and Protect Livermore Equal Access. Real quick, I would like to point out that in your staff report, there seems to be some misinformation. Licenses are due to be cut January 1st, not applications accepted. Applications accepted should be coming in about December for dispensaries, so just would like to point that out. I understand and appreciate the city trying to maintain control over the hostile industry that cannabis is, especially coming into regulations newly.
The hostile state we're worried about.
But one thing I would like to bring warning of, if the county of Alameda opens a dispensary in Livermore, it is going to be only smokable products. We're not going to have the option for people of edibles, topicals, tinctures. It's solely going to be smokable. So I know Mayor Marchand, you were seeking a leafless dispensary. This is the dead opposite of what you would like to see. This is the dead opposite of what you would like to see. On top of that, it's, it's this really, where I can understand and appreciate it, the draconian prohibitions are not going to work, as we've seen firsthand for many, many, many years. You know, for every one person that's shut down by some law, the cannabis industry steps up and finds ways around those laws. We've been very, very good about it, especially in the last 20 years. So the way, the best way to stop that from happening is to actually create legislation, regulations, create a thriving business, so then you don't have to worry about the police chasing people out. Free-market economics are going to chase those people out. Because today, right now, are you going to go spend top dollar for, from some unknown person on a bottle of wine that you find on Craigslist? Or are you going to walk into Wentie Vineyards and get one that you really, really appreciate, and you know carries standards of production that will not harm you? This is just one little part that I think that the city should really, really consider. Also, this would be going against more than 65% of what people voted for in this last election. Thank you.
Mr. Rangel, thank you. Okay, any discussion or comments on 4.01?
I do have a question.
Councilmember Carling.
Do we know what the county had? I think they were beginning to accept applications on October 12th. Do we have any knowledge of what, if any, applications they've received?
We have not heard anything from the county yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No motion?
I'll move. We accept 4.01.
Okay, and this is primarily in recognition that until the state comes up with their own regulations, that we need to maintain local control. So, the motion is made by Councilmember Carling. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we have no public hearings. Matters for consideration. Moving on to the status of the downtown public engagement and consideration of amending the agreement with Placeworks. This is directly in line with the comments that Mr. Stein was making earlier. Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of the council. So back at your meeting in August, you accepted the Downtown Steering Committee's Public Engagement Plan, directed staff to commence with the outreach that was included in that plan, and then also asked for an update, including participation metrics. And so we'll show you some of that information here this evening. So shown on the screen, the public engagement plan is made up of two primary components. One is designed to get the word out, and then two, to allow multiple channels for broad participation by as many members of the public as possible. So here are some of the methods we use to get the word out in addition to the project website. So we used social media, including Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor, frequent updates and pushes out on those. We had displays at the library in downtown. We had ads in the Valley Times, the Independent, the El Observador, and Peachtree Flyers with local schools. And we also had radio ads on KKIQ and the local Spanish radio. These are some of the channels that we're using to receive community feedback. The items in black text have occurred. The ones in red are upcoming. And I do have a more complete schedule of upcoming events that we'll show in a few slides. So we did have five neighborhood meetings and two larger venue community workshops that attracted over, over 550 attendees. And of those, about 24 folks attended more than one workshop. And the number of unique attendees was right around 530. So we also conducted two downtown walking tours. The latest was this Saturday. About 29 folks attended those two events. And that walking tour is now also available online through the online engagement tools. We've held a number of pop-up events. The ones we've held are shown in black. And again, we still have several to go, and I'll put the dates and times of those up in a few slides. We have made a number of presentations to local business organizations, such as the Rotary Livermore Chamber of Commerce, Livermore Downtown, Inc., and the Livermore Winegrowers Association. We do have presentations lined up this week to civics and economics classes over at Livermore High School. And we're also working with the vice principal at Vineyard School to make presentations to English as second language classes and citizenship classes over at Vineyard School and Maryland Avenue. So the next few slides are information that's based on the priority rankings worksheets turned in over the community workshops, the pop-ups, presentations, and online. And you can see that the, sort of, over 45-year-olds are the highest percentage of attendees. And with over, over two-thirds of the attendees, or percentage, in that age range. Similar are the percentage for the age groups participating online, again with the highest percentage falling to the 48 through 64-year-old age group. And we have a comparison for those two channels. Again, showing similarities, although with the online engagement, the percentage seems, the percentage falls off more dramatically in the 65 and older group than in the workshops and neighborhood meetings. So on the screen now are some upcoming events. As you said, Mayor Marchand, we do intend to close the online engagement tools on Friday, November 3rd at 5 o'clock. We do have our last pop-up event, November 4th, which is a Pete the Cat Party over at Civic Center Library from 2 to 4. We do have some larger events coming up with the Rotary Spirit Run, Halloween Family Fun at the Civic Center Library on the 28th, the Dia de los Muertos Celebration over at the Rincon Library on November 1st. That's a very large draw that we're excited about. And then over at Las Pacitas College in the Quad at 11 to 2, if you'd like to come out and hang out with folks younger than me.
Mr. Stewart, before you go past the slide, since it's come up twice, what the heck is a Pete the Cat Party? I cannot, I don't.
You don't know Pete the Cat?
You don't know Pete the Cat? It's this wonderful children's book.
Yeah, no, she never read Pete the Cat.
Well, she's not.
It's a children's book, then.
He is a children's book character, according to Tamara Galanter.
Well, she's right.
It's a great, great character.
I know Pete the Cat.
Yeah.
Sorry, you know, the one pop culture reference that I don't get, and everybody.
My gosh.
All right, moving on, sorry.
Mr. Ross apparently has three books with Pete the Cat.
There you go.
Great, does he fit in too?
We're hoping to catch the parents of what elementary school kids.
Okay. So again, we do anticipate presenting all of the information back to the council on November 27th at your city council meeting. And again, we're closing the online engagement on the 3rd at 5 o'clock, and then our last pop-up on the 4th. So that's it in terms of outreach events and sort of feedback from the channels. Regarding the contract with Placeworks, there has been a number of changes to the original scope in the agreement, including facilitating and attending additional steering committee meetings and attending city council meetings, subcontracting experts in the field of architecture, urban design, and hotel and economics, producing and refining the development concepts and the visual simulations, and then generating the workbook and priorities ranking worksheets in addition to all the banners and flyers that you've seen around town. The existing agreement amount, including the contingency, includes sufficient funds for covering the Phase 1 work and the changes I just summarized, and commencing Phase 2 through August, but does not include sufficient funds for the additional products, workshops, events, and meetings proposed in the engagement plan. And so staff is recommending that the council authorize the city manager to sign an agreement to the amendment for an additional $283,500, including a $20,000 contingency, which would bring the total compensation over the life of the steering committee and the outreach project to $553,500. And that does conclude the staff presentation. We are available for questions.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Carling.
Thanks, Mr. Stewart. Very good. I think the staff have done a great job. How did you collect the demographic data, the age data, for the folks that attended? Did you give them a range, or this is voluntary, I assume, to?
Yeah, it's a range, and it is self-reported.
Okay.
They do have opportunities to write down their exact age, but we put them into the ranges that you see on the slides.
Okay. Thank you. I've heard a lot of good things about the outreach and the way it's gone, so I'm hoping when it gets wrapped up, we will see. I presume we're going to get deeper into the statistical level when we get this?
Yeah, we'll present a detailed analysis on the results and some Google Analytics on, you know, how people get to the sites and do, and report their information and all kinds of analytics for you.
Google Analytics, I love that.
Any other questions? Okay, I have some cards for public comment. Jean King, John Stein, and David Rounds. Ms. King.
Good evening. Jeff Kaski is out of town. He's out of the country exactly. And he left a statement, which I will read. "It was encouraging to see the turnout. Lots of residents interested in having a voice in the downtown development. The developer interests got in their shots, claiming that the bankhead would benefit from an east-side hotel, but no reasoning was offered, and most folks figured out that was because there was none to be had. Even if bankhead patrons are staying at the hotel, they are as likely to attend from a restaurant or shop as from a hotel. What brings in undecided bankhead guests is a vibrant downtown that still offers them a place to park, and for the mobility-challenged, some nearby accessible parking. An adjacent hotel just gets in the way of that. I was disappointed that until the last few workshops, the east-side parking enabled by a west-side hotel did not get mentioned. When it did finally get into the presentation, it made a significant difference for many people, emphasizing the interest in parking." So that's the end of Mr. Kaski's, and I will take the rest of the time to do my comments. Okay, I believe that in the staff's report that the outreach by Placeworks should continue and the budget should be extended. I was very glad to see that the outreach has dealt with the issues of the downtown and not on personal issues. Unfortunately, the steering committee did get quite personal, and that is not the way to bring the city together to reach the best plan. I appreciate the corrections, the math errors in the workbook on the number of parking spaces in the area of the open space for the West Side Hotel Concept A. And I thank Carrie from Placeworks for working to make the online input more user-friendly. We worked on that together for a while. Suggested changes to the workshop presentation were not made, though. It would be good to clarify that the $14.5 million housing loan can be paid back over time. People know that I was a member of the steering committee and have voiced their opinions to me that the process is biased towards an east-side hotel. Just today, someone I saw on a walk in my neighborhood said that it is ridiculous, in this day of making hotel reservations online or on a smartphone, to promote the hotel on the east side because it can be seen a few seconds sooner on Livermore Avenue. He continued that retaining and then retaining and increasing parking on the east side with more regular and handicap parking and drop-off space for buses will benefit the bankhead theater goers more than having a hotel there. And I agree with that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. John Stein, David Rounds.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. Basically, I attended one of the workshops, the very first one, and found it interesting, but somewhat frustrating. The workshop basically consisted of a number of presentation boards for the steering committees for plans, two hours of providing information on economics and design, and then 15 minutes to create a plan by each table of about eight to 10 individuals. 15 minutes was nowhere near enough to resolve the conflicts and varying opinions and different ideas. The process seemed somewhat inverted. I think the process would be, would benefit from a set of clearly defined goals. There were some agreements among the 12 or 15 tables. The general agreement was that 20 or 30% of the site should be landscaped, open space. Residential development should be the minimum possible. It should be separated from the commercial. There was a strong concern about parking and traffic. The community wants abundant parking and smoothly flowing traffic. The concerns were voiced about finance, and the community wanted minimum impacts on the current general plan and levels of service throughout the community. And finally, the preponderance of the tables seemed to agree that the west-side location for the hotel was preferable. I think you have a number of goals that various groups have. Those are basically what the community wants. The arts community wants more rehearsal space in a black box theater and an amphitheater. The winegrowers want a hotel as large as possible. The developers want free parking and land as cheap as possible. The downtown business owners want to minimize the impacts on their businesses. I would suggest, rather than going directly to a detailed plan and spending a half a million dollars on quantitative studies, a better approach would be to first come up with the various goals, look at the disparity of the goals, the conflicts, and try and resolve those conflicts, and try and come up with a consensus of what the goals are for all of the varying groups, and try and come up with some sort of a consensus before the plan is developed. Otherwise, you're going to spend a lot of money on renderings and detailed planning studies, and the community may be dissatisfied with the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. David Rounds.
Honorable mayor, council, staff, thanks for the chance to speak. It has been very refreshing to see the amount of community involvement at these workshops. I am one of those people, of 24 people, that have gone to more than one. After attending several of the community meetings and a couple of the pop-up events, I wanted to say that it seems to me that the council should vote to follow the staff recommendation to increase the budget enough to allow Placeworks to finish their work. Having said this, I too believe that there has been some bias in the presentations at these outreach events. After all, Placeworks has worked for the city and has received direction from the city council, and the council has some strong points of view on the outcomes of this process. This was abundantly clear when the council was giving Placework instructions on the outreach plan. At that time, one of the council members was very explicit in his demand that a community group not be allowed to lobby these outreach meetings. While his admonitions were strident and a little offensive to those of us who have strong beliefs in the sanctity of the First Amendment, the members of the steering committee who were on the community group, on the Ventnor's who were on the community group, on the ventners group, on the chamber, and on other business groups, all agreed that they would not bring new material to these outreach meetings that might undermine the process. And ultimately, everybody played nice during the meetings. And while members of these various interest groups, as they should, participated in the outreach meetings, they did not disrupt the process. Hopefully, as the outreach winds down and the council receives a report out from Placeworks, this same level of decorum by the council members and the stakeholders will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Okay, that's the end of the comment cards. Comments from the council? The Chair of the Steering Committee, any comments?
No, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't. I think that Placeworks has done a terrific job, and I certainly support the increase.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. -- the city's proposal to accept the additional budget of $283,500.
And I'll second. Additional comments?
Comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to also comment on the process. I've mentioned before that it seems it's a very comprehensive and aggressive outreach process, probably more than I've ever seen in such a short period of time. I mean, your outreach tools, I think the only thing that you were missing is skywriting. Other than that, every single tool available to us has been used in such a short period of time. And I know it's an aggressive process. It might, you know, some people might want it to go a little bit slower, but we just want to keep the conversation going. Two comments. One, I'm a little discouraged in general, and this is coming, I'm not being specific to one side or the other, but I'm a little discouraged when people talk in such absolute terms, as in, if it's located here, it's a success; if it's located there, it's a complete failure. I believe that we have many options available to us, and they can all be successful on several different levels. And it also relates to what Mr. Stein said in his comments. It depends on what your goals are. And I think it will be useful at some point to... I don't know if we've ever really clearly formulated our goals and objectives, but we've all mentioned before, either, you know, make sure that it's fiscally possible to do it, and make sure that we're not building something that's going to cost us a lot of money in the long run. My goal that I've always been hammering is make sure that we're not destroying the character and the feel of what we already have. So I think it would be helpful at some point, when we're processing all this, to kind of clearly state some of our main goals with this project. But again, getting back to the absolutes, it's just, it is discouraging, I think, because I'm hearing it from multiple angles, and people who are east-side versus... It shouldn't be a versus. It should be, what are the benefits and drawbacks to each side in making the decision there? But I just, it really eats at me when I hear people say, if it goes here, it's a failure. And I just don't believe that either side would be a failure.
Counselor Murray-Werner?
Yeah, I'd like to follow on with what Vice Mayor said and Mr. Stein. I absolutely believe that the goals need to be articulated, as opposed to the way this, some groups have set this up as to which side the hotel should be on. I think that's an outcome. It's not a goal in itself, and that we... I'm hopeful that when we actually... Comes back to us and we start deliberating, we will have goals articulated, and we will follow a fairly logical process and get to a reasonable answer. And I also believe that this isn't an absolute thing. There are various degrees, and we'll figure it out.
All right. Very good. Any comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? You seconded, didn't you?
I seconded, and then I started talking. So you may have talked over my second.
You forgot.
Pretty much.
Okay. Okay, so, motion was made by Counselor McCarling, seconded by the Vice Mayor Spodowski. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Onto the East Bay Regional Park District, grant request in the amount of $132,000 from the Altamont Landfill Settlement for the acquisition of access to Dulin Canyon, which really is an amazing place. And it's that lake up there that's just incredible.
Wait for it. Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, members of the city council. Tonight's item is a request from the East Bay Regional Park District for grant funding from the Altamont Open Space Committee in order to purchase portions of the Goslin-Rollins property, which would facilitate a staging area and future access into the Dulin Canyon Regional Preserve. The open space fund is administered by an open space committee, which is comprised of representatives from the cities of Livermore and Pleasanton, Alameda County, and the Sierra Club. The City of Dublin participates in an advisory capacity on that committee. The fund was created as part of the settlement agreement with Altamont Landfill and collects portions of the tipping fees in order to acquire open spaces in eastern Alameda County. The fund currently contains approximately $10.7 million, and Councilmember Warner is currently Livermore's representative on the committee. Each representative's board or council must accept the recommendations of the committee prior to allocating any funds for an acquisition. So the Goslin-Rollins property is shown here. It's accessed from Collier Canyon Road, and it's immediately adjacent or east of the Dulin Canyon Preserve. The preserve itself is at the head of Dulin Canyon. Here's Dulin Canyon Road, and at the mouth of the canyon, along Dulin Canyon Road, the city currently owns 200 acres. Here's Los Bacetus College, North Canyon's Parkway, and the I-580 freeway, just to put the property in context. And again, another map without the aerial to provide context to show you how far north it is, this is the Contra Costa-Alameda County line. The East Bay Park District is requesting funds in order to purchase a one-and-a-half-acre staging area along Collier Canyon Road and approximately 2,800 linear feet easements for a trail and emergency access, emergency vehicle access, and these would provide future public access into the Dulin Preserve, which currently has no public access to it. This is the 640-acre Dulin Canyon Regional Preserve, which was purchased in 2010 for $6.4 million with assistance from the city. The city authorized Altamont open space funding, as well as contributed additional funding to satisfy some of the city's mitigation requirements for the El Charro and Isabel interchange projects. Shown here, the preserve is made up of rolling hills and varying terrain. It has several ponds and tributaries to Cottonwood Creek, and provides a variety of unique habitat types and is home to special status species. One of the most prominent features of the preserve is this seasonal lake. It was, it's human-made. It was created by damming portions of Cottonwood Creek for cattle ranching purposes and to provide a water source for cattle grazing. The Goslin-Rollins staging area and trail would provide the community with educational and wildlife viewing opportunities, as well as non-motorized passive recreational opportunities in the preserve. The purchase would support Livermore's policies to protect biodiversity, provide a comprehensive park system, and provide public access to Livermore's open spaces. The total purchase price is just over $264,000. The Park District is seeking half of that amount as a 50 percent match to the district's contribution for the purchase. Any public access would be consistent with a land use plan that would be adopted by the Park District and would need to make sure that it would not impact the city's mitigation easements. East Bay Parks would be responsible for all facility maintenance, and the city would have no management or maintenance obligations by authorizing the open space funds and accepting the recommendations of the committee would not impact the city's general fund. If the council authorized the funding, there would still be approximately $10.6 million left in the Altamont Open Space Fund. And with that, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution accepting the recommendations of the open space committee, authorizing a grant to East Bay Regional Park District for the purchase of a staging area, a trail easement, and emergency vehicle access easement, which would provide access to the Dulin Canyon Regional Preserve. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. Questions from the council?
You're not aware of any date when this is going to open, correct? I see that with bated breath up here.
No, that is correct. The Park District would have to do further study on when to open up access to the preserve.
Okay. I have no cards for this, so there's no public comment. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilmember Warner?
Motion. I've got a couple of comments to...
Oh, okay. Go for it.
Okay. Do like the Vice Mayor did. So I just want to say, this is a really reasonable thing to do, and if you could back up a couple of slides, I just, first of all, there's the price, which I, you know, based on when we went through it in the meeting, that's a good, fair number. But if you could just look here, what's... You see where the yellow line is where they want to put the public access, but the property owners' buildings are right there. So I think the property owners, to be commended for letting this access so close to their facilities, and they've worked hard, you know, with the various people to reach an agreement. So this is, it's a really good acquisition, and it didn't have to go that easily, but I think it's a good deal. So I heartily recommend this.
Very good. So with that, you've made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for the record, the motion was to approve staff's recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Onto 6.03, update on the fiscal years 2017 to 2019 city council goals and priorities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Christine Rodriguez, Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm pleased to present a status update on your 2017-2019 council goals and priorities. As you may recall, back in February of this year, council held a public workshop to establish your priorities and goals for the 2017-2019 budget cycle. Six priorities were selected with associated work programs back in April. Those six priority areas are affordable housing and homelessness, asset management, disaster preparedness and public safety, downtown, innovation and economic development, and long-term financial stability. With affordable housing and homelessness, just a reminder, the purpose of this goal is to expand affordable housing opportunities and implement a housing-first model to reduce homelessness. There are four primary action areas associated with this goal, and those are to identify financing strategies, acquire and rehab new sites for affordable housing, create affordable ownership opportunities, and secure support services. With respect to finance strategies, staff has been working with Mid Penn and Sunflower Hill on the recently approved Sunflower Hill project. As you may recall, this project will provide 44 affordable units for adults with developmental disabilities. It also preserves an historic single-family home built in 1927 on the site. The site is located on First Street across from Lowe's, and staff has been working with Mid Penn on their low-income housing tax credit application, and we should hear more about that in March of next year. Another example is staff has been working with Mid Penn also on the Chestnut Square project. This site's located on Chestnut Street between North P and North N. It will provide 112 affordable rental units for families and seniors, as well as 44 market-rate townhomes. Demolition on the site is complete, and construction should begin later this year. With respect to creating affordable ownership opportunities, the city does have an inclusionary housing ordinance, and this ordinance requires that all residential development projects provide affordable housing units on-site. Three recent examples of this are the Auburn Grove Project on First Street. This will provide 15 affordable units. The Wayland Project, which is at the former Sonoma School Site property, will provide eight units, and the Arroyo Vista Project will provide 52 affordable units. With respect to homeless services, staff has been working with the nonprofit Abode Services to implement the East County Housing Resource Centers, and these will provide additional funding for outreach and resource coordination. And staff has also hired a homeless outreach specialist this year. She recently began and will be working to secure support services for the housing-first model. Our second goal is asset management, and the purpose of this goal is to establish a comprehensive asset management program to ensure the community continues to receive vital services through a sustainable infrastructure strategy. This goal has four primary work areas. The first is to identify and assess the condition of our public assets, then to develop an asset management program with strategies and prioritizations, also to engage and educate the community about our asset management program, and to improve data management related to our assets. So far this year, council has adopted prioritization methodologies for decorative walls, traffic signals, street lights, traffic signs, sidewalks, and pedestrian ramps. The citizens' asset management community, or CAMP, has been meeting regularly and engaging with the community at events such as the farmer's market, and they have additional events scheduled in this coming year to gather the community feedback and also to educate them about the program. Our next goal is disaster preparedness and public safety, and the purpose of this goal is twofold: first, to expand the use of technology, enhancing public safety, and second, to improve disaster preparedness, including staff and community preparedness and readiness for an emergency. So far this year, we've hired a management analyst specializing in disaster preparedness. He began back in September and has been busy updating some of our emergency plans and conducting staff training. In fact, we had a tabletop exercise just last week associated with the Great American Shakeout. We've also been working with the cities of Pleasanton and Dublin and the Dublin-San Ramon Services District to update the Tri-Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan. And we are also working with a consultant updating our emergency operation plan, or EOP. With respect to staff training, we just sent our first group of 15 staff down to an intensive four-day course sponsored by the California Office of Emergency Services, otherwise known as CalOES. We had such a great time and learned so much at that course. We'll be sending another 15 to 20 staff at their next training in the spring of next As you also know, you recently approved the Summer Community Meeting Hall, and housed within that facility will be our Emergency Operations Center. We have finalized changes to the EOC, increasing efficiencies in that facility, and the bids will be opening on October 31st. Our next goal's downtown, and you've already heard a lot about that tonight on a previous item, so I'll go quickly through this one. Just to remind you, the purpose of this goal is to enhance the city's vibrancy by completing critical projects downtown, ensuring the right balance of local amenities to support quality of life. And as you've already heard this evening, we did hire an outreach and planning consultant. We convened a 19-member steering committee. They held eight public meetings between April and June and developed a community outreach program, which you adopted in August. And we've been actively engaged in that outreach program, and wrapping it up, within the next few weeks, we'll be coming back to you on November 27th with the results of all of that community outreach. With respect to the priority area of innovation and economic development, the purpose of this goal is to encourage an innovation-driven economy, supporting revenue-generating businesses, high-quality jobs, and entrepreneurs. One of the work areas is to address, one of the work areas is to encourage an innovation-driven economy. A great example of this is the Switch. It provides an environment for early-stage entrepreneurs to get their start in a collaborative workspace. It's been so successful that they've had to relocate into a larger facility, and that facility has a grand opening scheduled for mid-November, and it's located at Second Street and South M. Alumni companies that have spun out of the Switch have now raised over $50 million in angel and venture capital and have created 70 new jobs. Our greatest success story to date is POC Medical. They've raised over $21 million and will be locating in a 24,000-square-foot facility here in Livermore. Another work area in this priority is business attraction and retention. Staff has completed relocation assistance for Gillig, Toyota Materials Handling, FM Industries, and Draxel Meyer. With respect to workforce development, we recently held the Tri-Valley Manufacturing Day... Day on October 6th. It was a great success. We had over 200 attendees and 16 participating companies. We toured manufacturing facilities such as Gillig, Topcon, Bake Fresh, Lam Research, and EIS. We've also conducted a manufacturing career hiring event and two Tri-Valley regional job fairs this year. With respect to tourism and promotion, staff has been working with its tourism-related partners such as Livermore Downtown, Inc., the Wine Growers Association, on developing shopping and dining initiatives and developing a Livermore Hospitality website. That website can be used by retail, hospitality, and tourism-related businesses to help their employees promote the Livermore Valley when they come to visit. That website's www.livermorehospitality.com. Our last goal, priority area, is long-term financial stability. The purpose of this goal is to implement sound financial practices to sustain the city's long-term financial viability. The primary action areas with this goal are to develop a debt policy and a compensation policy, to conduct a fee study, implement a financial software update, align core services with general fund resources, and identify funding resources for infrastructure repair and replacement associated with the asset management program. And to date, council has adopted the fee study. You did that back in September. Staff monitored interest rates and renewed our letter of credit this spring, and work is well underway on the compensation policy. It will be coming to you in early next year, and the financial software upgrade is also well underway. So as you can see, staff has, staff has been hard at work and has made significant progress on all six of your priority areas. We will return with another update in spring of next year, and this concludes our presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Good progress. Questions for the staff? Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks very much. It was very complete. I was just curious, on the disaster preparedness and public safety, I see you're coordinating with Pleasanton and Dublin. What about with the Labs? Do you guys coordinate with the Labs as well?
We do coordinate with them as well, just not on that specific plan. That's a hazard mitigation plan, and it's just for those partner cities.
Sure.
We have other plans-
There could be significant hazards coming out of either of those Labs.
Absolutely.
That's what caught my attention.
They're natural hazards. That's the difference.
Okay, fair enough. But, right, when do we include unnatural hazards in them? Do we do that? Or... We do. Okay.
Yes, we do.
All right, thanks.
Any questions? Councilmember Warner?
I'll just say it's an amazing amount of good work across a lot of different topics, so just want to commend you. Thank you again.
Lot of stuff going on. Especially with the downtown, is there a specific plan and all the other, all the other stuff going on?
My thoughts exactly. I just, I just don't know what else we can throw at you. I mean, it seems like-
Don't try to think too hard.
No, I mean, we had our goal-setting workshop, but I think it really is a wide range of issues, and everything's being covered to the best of our ability and beyond in most cases, so thank you.
Okay, very good. I don't have any, any cards, so with that, motion to accept it or just, just receive the report? Okay, well, very good. Well, thank you very much. Now moving on to councilmember reports and matters initiated. Let's make sure we're in the right place. Yes. Okay. Councilmember Coomer?
I have nothing I can report at this time, because we had something. I had all my material together with me, and I didn't bring it in, oh, out of the house this time. I did attend, I left a meeting, left a board meeting, but I don't have the details with me, so that was-
But you were there.
I figured that Councilmember Spodowsky could do that, yes.
Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thank you. Since we did not have this report the last time, since we adjourned so late in the evening, so I'll start back. In September, I went to a Stop Waste meeting. You'll hear a recurring theme from me about stopping waste on the 27th, and also had a Tri-Valley Citizens Council meeting that same day. On the 4th of October, there was the all-employee barbecue, which, in the barn, which is, I thought was a very nice event, the first one that I attended, so it was, was very nice. Also, the mayor and I went up to the Zone 7 60th Anniversary Celebration at the Del Valle Dam, and it was also the 50th Anniversary Celebration of the Del Valle Dam. So that was really, that's really an interesting perspective of Del Valle from up there at the dam. That was really pretty fun. On the 10th, the mayor and I went to, out to Lawrence Livermore, where they had a foundation kickoff there. They've created a new 503C for STEM education, that kind of thing. On the 11th, I had the Community Monitoring Committee on which I sit, which is looking at the landfill and how well they are doing in terms of meeting their obligations. October 12th, I had another Stop Waste meeting. On the 17th, many of us were at the Draxel Meyer ribbon cutting, and that was really, and we got a tour of the facility. Draxel Meyer makes high-end components for, and they, they mentioned this several times, for premium automobile manufacturers. I heard the word premium several times. And right now, they're making door panels for Tesla, which is why they're located where they are, and it's really pretty interesting.
But you can't say that.
I think we can say Tesla. Anyway, I did. And then on the 18th, I subbed for the Vice Mayor at the East Bay Community Energy Meeting over in Hayward, which is in and of itself an interesting program, looking at how to develop clean energy for the public. I'll leave it at that. The Vice Mayor can explain more in detail.
Maybe later.
Maybe later. I do have matters initiated, and that was around getting back to the cannabis dispensaries, and I would like to, for us to follow up on what the county receives, because if the county doesn't receive anything, I guess I'd like to have a discussion about, at some point, looking at a dispensary here within the city limits. I know the Vice Mayor at the last meeting spoke to the point, observing that we had another, a number of BRISA and Vasco community folks here, and that could we put the dispensary in the far northeast corner of that area on your, on your plan map that was shown at the last meeting. And I guess I'd like not to lose the momentum on that. I know I was, at the last meeting, I was prepared to support a dispensary if one was to be proposed, but with the county moving faster than we are, I was a little concerned that we might end up with two next to each other, and I didn't think that was such a great idea. I'm also interested in the smokable business. I mean, this is, Mr. Rangel mentioned that, is this true, as far as you guys know? Only smokable, not edibles or the oils?
Wasn't aware of that restriction, but we'll follow up.
Would you please?
That's what I've heard.
Mr. Rangel mentioned that to me after the last meeting, and so neither the, neither the edibles or the oils that the folks rub on their skin would, would be available in a dispense. If the county put one here, it'd only be smokable, which seems a little odd to me, but that may be it. So I'm not sure all of what I'm asking. I just don't want to lose momentum about potentially supporting a dispensary here in town.
Sure. So we, based on the council direction last time, we are going to be reaching out to the community one more time-
Oh, okay.
...to look at the northeast portion of that area.
Right.
And then we also can follow up with the county and provide you with a report back on their-
Would you please?
Status.
Thank you.
In my conversations with the supervisor's office, it was a leaf-only dispensary that they were talking about, and what I had spoken of was the leaf-less type of dispensary, where they only have the tinctures, the extracts, the consumables. So really, as Mr. Rangel pointed out, we're polar opposite by our considerations.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Warner?
Well, a few things. First of all, I also went to the Draxel Meyer ribbon cutting, and they did emphasize premium, and they followed that point up by emphasizing it with the quality of the reception afterwards at the Palm Event Center. I think that set the bar for all other ribbon cuttings, I think. So it was, that was really good. The main thing that I spent a lot of time on beginning of October was I had the opportunity of representing us with our sister-city 40th Anniversary in Yotsukaido, Japan. So that was really good, but one of the things, it was an interesting experience. I didn't know what to expect, stayed with the host family, and it was, it was truly wonderful. But one of the things I really hadn't counted on was I was, had to be a pack mule. I'd carried over 60 pounds worth of gifts and stuff for this thing. But when I, I al, and that wasn't the end of it, I had to carry a lot of stuff back, and so one of the things I had to carry back was a gift from the mayor of Yotsukaido for our mayor, and thanking him for the gift I presented. So I'll give this to you, so get a picture of it and prove I delivered it and didn't keep it for myself.
Here you are.
I'm sure you'll be inviting us all over to enjoy it. It could be.
Okay, we'll open it another time.
Yeah, because- Well, the ritual is, if you're going to open something, you got to do it carefully. You just can't do it like we do, rip it apart like it was Christmas or something, so it would take us the rest of the night for you to open it. So the other thing I would say is, I think some people who went on the trip will be here at some future council meeting, but it was an opportunity not only for us to celebrate the 40th anniversary, but there's an exchange between students. 20 of us go there and 20 of them come here in the, in March. It's just wonderful for the kids, so it was a, a thank you for the opportunity to go there and learned a lot. It was generally good. I had to give a, you know, read the proclamation, fortunately not in Japanese, but I will say that their mayor did a good job of reading some of his speeches in English, so that was, that was good. The other thing that goes along with the Draxel Meyer ribbon cutting, one of the speeches I had to give was sort of an overview of what Livermore is all about, and it shows the theme, you know, what are some of our defining elements that gave us the character. And we start off with the Western tradition, then we have the wine, and then we have the science. And I think what we're seeing now with what's going on with the I-Gate stuff and the Draxel Meyer, I really think that we can add another slide element to the deck talking about Livermore with respect to the, the industry that we have here. So I'm just going to suggest that.
And when you said defining elements, you did say Livermoreum.
Right, yeah, there's that too.
Which is hard to define.
Yeah, we had to give away Livermoreum pins. I had hats and pins, brochures.
Very good.
So it was, it was pretty good. So there was that. Some of the other meetings I attended didn't report out on, because in the last meeting, I wasn't here, was Livermore Downtown, and, well, that was just recently, and they had a standard business, but then it was the preview to an, one of the outreach meetings, so we're hopeful that the downtown merchants will weigh in on what they think is one of the goals for the downtown. There was an intergovernmental meeting and talked about that, and then we just heard about the Altamont Open Space Committee and what, and the results of that. So that's on the report outs. I have one matters initiated, and as I'm thinking about the downtown, and I guess maybe I had a lot of, too much time on the plane or something, but we're going to have to start building it eventually. And one of the key goals that we've got during the process and at the end is that we maintain a sufficient amount of parking. And so along those lines, one of the elements of that parking is the handicap parking. So independent of which side of the street the hotel goes on, we are going to be, end up doing something with the area next to the bankhead, and in that process, we will be wiping out, I think there are three handicap sparking, parking spots at the moment. So what I'd like to initiate is staff to come back with a decision package at the next council meeting, telling us, and the decision being whether we would want to ever go forward with a full engineering design of placing, I estimate, six to eight handicap spots on the northeast side of the bankhead. And that is a, right now, it's a vacant lot. It's a perfect location for the, for these spaces. It's the same distance essentially as the handicap spots we have now, and we could double or maybe triple the amount of handicap parking right there, and then it's right next to the bus stop, and so we could also figure out how to make it a drop-off. So I think it's an interim solution that we're going to need as we go through the construction phases, so I would like staff to come back with a cost estimate on, on the various options that we might have there. So I'm asking for nodding heads to say we should get that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Spodowsky?
Okay, a quick summary. The, we had a meeting of the Alameda-San Joaquin Regional Rail Working Group, and since the passage of AB 758, it seems like we've become a little bit more legitimate. We had some transit advocacy groups show up for the first time. We've been meeting for over two years, and they, they showed up to this meeting suddenly after 758 was passed, so that's an indication that we're actually moving forward with something real. In terms of the wheels update, ridership continues to increase due to our realignment. Of particular note, the Los Pecitas student ridership, it was last year when the route initiated, when we rerouted the rapid through, not through Los Pecitas, but along Los Pecitas College. The student ridership was about 400 rides per day. Now we're up to about 600 rides per day, and the student body will be voting in a few weeks whether or not to assess fees so they can continue that free ridership pass, because it was a two-year pilot project, and students were able to ride for free. We also have the Measure BB money that we've been using for the student passes in Livermore, and that's about 200 a day during the school year, so that's another good success story. One other service that I want to mention, and this, this was actually on one of the Livermore Rants and Raves Facebook page, it came up about parking at the BART stations, and we do have the 580X, which is a route that goes from the Transit Center, so you can park at the parking garage and take the bus straight into the Dublin Pleasanton Station. There are only, there's limited stops, maybe one or two, depending on if people are waiting along the way, but it's about a 20-minute ride to the BART station, so you can park downtown and get to park relatively quickly. So please, if people enjoy that route, please continue to use it so we can justify its existence. The only other thing I have, I do want to mention that I went to a meeting at the Switch a couple of weeks ago. Very impressive. I can't wait for the grand, grand opening to get down into the cellar and see what that looks like, that it chained off. I didn't want to, you know, jump the chain and start running around down there, but it is, it is really nice, so I'm excited to see that up and going. It's such a great accomplishment, and kudos to everybody involved with that. So, that's it.
All right. Already had a report on the 60th Anniversary of Zone 7. October 5th was my state-of-the-city town hall, which was, it's always a lot of fun to have an opportunity to talk with the community. On the, October 6th, there was a San Joaquin Regional Rail Committee meeting, that's the ACE train, and it was brought out that SB1, which is originally thought to provide $400 million for a congested corridor connection for the Altamont Corridor for this BART ACE connection, turns out that that money is only for the Merced Series connection. So some of the money that San Joaquin County was going to be bringing to the table is actually already spoken for, for another extension. On October 9th, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. Their 580 Express Lane Committee, the update on the operations was 1.4 million trips on the express lane over the last fiscal year. On the Planning Policy and Ledge Committee, over the last 10 years, the traffic flow eastbound on 580 has dropped from 42 miles an hour to 16 miles per hour. So that's why we are trying to get traffic to move as best we possibly can in that corridor. Let's see, the update on the free student bus passes, we didn't have the free passes here in Livermore at first. They were reduced cost and for a limited number, so it turns out only 3% of the eligible students are using the bus passes, only 84 students. Since we've now expanded to Christensen, Del Valle, and Livermore High School and East Avenue, it is now free and universal bus passes, so right now, beginning of the year, we're up to 9%, and hopefully that number's going to keep going up. The 11th, you already heard- The 11th, we already heard about the Altamont, or the Alameda County-San Joaquin Regional Rail Working Group, the meeting that we had on that. There's also the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, where we had an update on some of the activities going on in Newark. On the 12th, I was at an East Bay Economic Development Alliance meeting. Very interesting, because Jim Wonderwin from the Bay Area Council was there, and Steve Hemminger from the Metropolitan Transportation Convention were both there, talking about, Jim Wonderwin underscored the importance of the ACE-to-BART connection. That's a big, primary importance as we're going to move this corridor around. In my conversation with Mr. Hemminger with MTC, he didn't believe it. So he didn't believe the numbers for the, for some of the alternatives. So we're still working on making the case for all of the folks that are behind that. Again, the Draxel Meyer opening, great event. On the 19th, the Lawrence Livermore National Security, this is the overriding group which operates the lab, gave out almost, actually over $100,000 in grants to local nonprofits. It's a wonderful program that they do every year. I know it's Bill Goldstein's, one of his favorite things to do. And on the 21st, at the Library, a wonderful Korean festival. That was terrific. There was taiko drummers and taekwondo, and it was a delightful program. And on Sunday was the Diwali Festival. That was at the Bankhead Plaza, the Hindu celebration of light over darkness, wisdom over ignorance, and good over evil. So that was another great event. On matters initiated, I was so busy going through all the procedural stuff, I skipped 4.02. We already passed it, that's a good thing, but we were talking about people picking up after their pets. And this is something that next door just blows up and patch and everybody else, rants and raves. So if we could have something come back to bring people's awareness to that they need to pick up after their pets as they're walking. I mean, some people report, they have cameras, and they watch people throw the waste into their yards, or they just leave it on the sidewalk, because the bags say that they're biodegradable. So they just leave them there, thinking eventually the bag's just going to go away. It doesn't. So if we just have something come back for the council consideration to try to keep the community clean and increase the awareness. Okay?
We can do that.
I think we got a few nods there. Okay. And with that, that's all I've got. So with that, meeting is adjourned. Happy Halloween.